And I will second. Ms. Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
I will vote aye. And now, to the moment we've all been waiting for, and this should be a very healthy meeting, given the number of policies we have to review. But McKenna, if you could take us through the policy updates from the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Ms. McKenna, you are muted.
Sorry about that. We haven't done the first half of the fours yet. But you all wanted to start with the student discipline. So we're start instead of starting with 4,000, we're going to start with 4,300, where the student discipline policies start. And then we can go back to the other policies in the fours next time. So if we want to go to policy 4,000s?
He, um, since Nelson's going to leave us about 9:30, should we start with those ones from technology and social media that's hanging on?
That would be great. Let's let's finish those first. And I'll be back very quickly.
Well, these, I think are essential to get in place.
I would agree.
Well, all of them are essential, but these. I'm going to miss your pretty face, McKenna.
Oh, I'll miss you. All right, can we pull up the first one? Is it the?
3225.
Yeah.
And I think these changes were from Ms. Stagner?
Yes, and what was added was actually on the very end, the last page H, I believe.
Ms. Stagner, could you refresh my memory, what you wanted to add here?
Now, these are the, I don't know if we can scroll down to it. But the, the, I talked to Dawn Brinson, who indicated that there's an desire to explore a gaggle, which is an online email filtering program. And I'm probably butchering that, but it it would be continuously monitoring. And so is there a way we can move down to the last page? Scroll down to the last page? Okay, whoops, sorry. Go back up to five, I'm sorry, page five.
Right version, this isn't the right version. Yeah, this is.
No.
This is the wrong.
That is not the right version. So I'll just explain it that if you can try to find the correct version, it was 112420 was the version. But that this will be continuously monitoring student emails for certain key words, threats, et cetera. And it was my concern that we put in something to address the expectation of continuous monitoring of email in the privacy section of this policy. And so I drafted some language. And that was the addition from the last time the committee looked at the policy. It's under the privacy section. If you could scroll down a little bit further. Why is that deleted?
I don't think this is it. Keep going. I think.
This is not the last one that we received.
I'm going to pull up my computer, the version that I sent, so I can be looking at it and find exactly where that that is.
In the version I have, all that language that appears to be struck out in this version should actually be there. I think that was what you added.
That's that's what I thought. And I looked at it last night to compare with the version that Kim had sent around. Yeah, I don't know why that is. It starts with in the course of monitoring the online activities of individuals who access the internet. So that, I don't know how that language got struck through, but that's the language I added to in to just put students and parents on notice that even though the gaggle will be monitoring the emails, we don't want to have a false sense of assurance that we will catch everything and that parents and guardians also have responsibility for supervising online activities and student safety. And this would be a concern, for example, if an alert came through in the middle of the night and someone missed it, or someone who was the person responsible for receiving those alerts was on vacation, or, you know, for whatever reason, an alert wasn't caught and something happened, that there would be a concern about liability for the school district for having the monitoring and not following through on it. And then there's language about encouraging training to address safety issues with online communication. So that was my addition. I, the versions that went around last night that Kim sent were were fine. I'm not sure how that language was stricken, but that was what I added. Dawn, did you have anything to add to that?
No, and then what you've got, I definitely agree with.
So we're keeping all of that that has been removed initially. Is that correct?
Correct. And that section.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the muted microphone. And that what is in purple here that's been struck through should be actually an added language.
So let's go from the very beginning, because some of the things that were taken out or appeared to be taken out, I think were put back in. So on page one, are we keeping under A, the first line?
No, that's going away.
Okay. And we're going to use, on the bottom, we're going to use may use. Page one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, is that may use? Is that what we're going to say? Or?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to have may use in there, McKenna.
Is it possible for us to get the updated version? And who has the updated version?
That was the version that was sent out yesterday. The version that was was sent out was is the correct version. The one posted is wrong, but everyone should have the correct version.
Okay.
And I, yeah.
We can resend it, though.
I'll send it to Ms. Joy.
I just wanted to make sure that when we post them for the vote, that it's the correct one that's up there. And there's no confusion.
I agree.
Because I'm, I'm a little confused.
Is there a way to to post the correct version right now? Or?
If if you let me share my screen, I'll pull it up.
You got it, give me one second.
And also I can get Chris, Crystal can post it too, if that's the.
Okay, can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we're leaving them the may use. So all that that isn't red is staying there. Those are all staying. And this is the section that was added. And then the warranty at the end, and that's it.
Ms. Nichols, do you have anything with these changes? Dr. Faust, Dawn, I'm satisfied with them.
No, I'm glad to see that we've re-entered some of that information. It certainly is more helpful, I think, to for everyone who reads the policy.
Absolutely.
And abides by it. Thank you, Dawn.
I will stop sharing my screen.
And share you. So Nelson, are you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, we'll hold these three until you get back, or four. Are we ready for the? What's?
Yeah, I, I have time to do. I think I have time to get through 7335 before I have to take off.
Okay.
And then I will leave our student policies in your ever capable hands.
Mr. Billiard, if if you leave, though, there will not be a quorum of the policy committee, which we're down to two at this point. So, I mean, Ms. Nichols can continue to receive the information about the policies, but if there's going to be a vote to move them forward to the board tonight, that will need to wait till you come back.
I can just be, if we could just take a 10 minute break, that way I can just.
I think a short recess might be wiser.
I apologize to everybody, it's the end of the semester for us college types. It just, I'll be very, very brief. So, I mean, we can continue until 9:30.
So 7335?
Yes.
Dawn?
Okay, so, I guess I just need to have some clarification. In the second paragraph, when it talks about all school employees, including student teachers and independent contractors, shall comply with the requirements of this policy. So who are we referring to there when we talk about independent contractors?
So I I might, so for example, if you have a physical therapist who has been contracted to work in the district and provide services to students, they may be accessing, and I I'm not sure, I mean, that's that's who an independent contractor is. I don't know whether, you know, McKenna can explain the thinking behind including them in the policy, but that's who I I think that it might refer to.
Yeah, I think the idea was if you have people who are, they're doing work for your school system that you might otherwise have a school employee do, but if it's, for instance, it's something where it's just not a full time job, so you just hire someone out to do some work like that, you still want them abiding by the same conduct standards as your employees, because they're still work, I mean, they're doing work, they're not working for you, they're they're an independent contractor, they're not your employee, but they're still doing work for the school system, so you don't want them misbehaving.
Okay. I guess my brain just goes to, because in my field, independent contractor, those are people that may come in and pull cable, do other things. And typically, you know, I don't see how we can police what they post in social media. We state independent contractors working in positions? Would that help?
Well, I think this is common. And definitely, as they were stating, it could be speech pathologists, physical therapists, nurses, you know, anything that has that. I mean, we would know who those individuals are when we look at independent contractors. I'll be honest with you, a lot of districts actually use this policy. I don't have a problem with the way it reads.
Yeah, I'm fine with it now that I understand, you know, all the other people that fall under that category.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes it could also even be a, you know, a teacher. I don't know if, for whatever reason, we would ever have that, but it could be anyone who is working for us with an independent contract.
Okay. So then down in section A, definitions of social media, where we're listing examples, are we wanting to list just the most common examples that are used now? Or are we wanting to, or are we just listing the examples that were created when this policy was done?
The previous policies, we didn't list them individually, but had a a term that included all of them.
Yeah, well, it does, it says, I mean, it does have a term. You talk about direct messaging, you know, and I'm not, I actually like the fact that examples are listed so that people understand that this is the kind of social media that we're talking about. So I'm okay with that, but I just didn't know if, you know, we want to remove like Flickr. Nobody uses that really much anymore. And specifically, we might want to put TikTok on there, since that is a very popular one right now, was was my thought process.
Yes, good catch.
Are there any others that you'd want to remove?
I mean, you could move Google Plus, because I don't think that's even a thing anymore.
Okay.
Would it be wise to say include, but are not limited to? Because this this will continue to change.
I think so.
I agree.
Okay.
And then where you list the, where it talks about social media components of learning management systems, instead of listing like Moodle or Edmodo, maybe we need to list the learning management systems that we use in our district and say such as Google Classroom, Canvas, Seesaw. And then other than that, I don't think I saw anything else.
No, I thought section B was was very detailed and thorough. So that was was my concern. For that's, I think it's excellent. Ms. Nichols, did you have anything on this policy?
No, I agree with everything that's in there now that we've made the change.
I I I do as well. And so with that, if I could just indulge everybody's patience for a quick 10 minute break. And again, I do apologize, that will be very brief. Just take attendance, tell them to have a good Christmas, and we'll get back to work.
Okay.
So, thank you very much, I'll be right back.
Could you go back to that one for a second, please? To the, to the top, the very last item under B? Okay, so that, again, this is language that I had added, and it appears to be struck out on Symbly. I'm not sure what happened, there's another paragraph also that I added. These were things that I think Dennis Wooton had requested that I tweaked and and sent around on the 27th for posting the version that I have. Those are not struck, and so I'm not sure what happened when they got posted, why my additions are now struck through.
Ms. Stagner, you're referring to the extent any employees of social media.
Yeah.
Students?
Yeah. I don't know why it struck through.
Yeah, I have that as added language, not deleted. The version I have.
So, Ms. Joy, Kim Joy, on the 25th of November, sent around some additional language that was requested by Dennis Wooton. And I, I think I reviewed that and then sent this version around that had that, those two paragraphs added. And I'm not sure why they're not showing up again. For some reason, it appears my changes were struck through, somebody didn't like them.
I definitely, looking at it, I don't see why it shouldn't be a part of this. Can we make sure to add that back in, please?
And then also in D5, that language there, has that been struck out too?
Is there a way for us to go in and see who struck through? I know when I used to edit papers, I could see if I were.
Yeah, that language of D5 should be in there.
This is some language that I think is in your employee handbook about expressing, you know, making note that it's an expression of personal opinion and not a statement of the New Hanover County Schools. And again, Mr. Wooton had requested that that be added. So I'm not sure why it's been struck through, but I would recommend that it stay.
So we need to get the original one posted back.
And I've got my version again, I can send it, I can re-forward that, but I think.
That'd be great.
So are we on our break at this time, or what?
I I think so now.
All right.
Okay, all right.
I'll be right back. I give it a second. Hello, everyone. I'm back whenever everybody else is ready. Again, apologize. I know how valuable your time is. What's that?
That was fast.
It's gotta be fast. I'm a busy man.
Yes, you are.
I do apologize again. But I guess 7335 is good with those changes, as long as we re-insert that language. Is that correct? Ms. Nichols, what are you gonna do for your retirement?
I'm gonna still work on Jane's house. I'm refinishing cabinets right now.
But you're not on any ladders?
Sometimes. I just did crown molding the other day.
So, a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, well, whenever everybody comes back, we're ready.
I'm back.
Thank you again, everybody. I definitely appreciate the patience. You know how valuable, how valuable everybody's time is. So McKenna, we can put that, those deleted items back in 7335? All right, so if there's nothing else for 7335, this'll be fun. All these student policies. Let's begin with policy 4370, student discipline hearings.
What about 3620 and 3445 that are still hanging?
Are they hanging?
So, 3445 is, is going to be held over the scholarship one until the January meeting.
Okay.
I'm not sure about 3620.
Oh, yes, the extracurricular activities piece. Yeah, let's, you wanna go through that, McKenna?
Sure. So, the issue with this one, though, I don't think we made any changes. I think the issue was you wanted to look further into whether or not you were gonna allow homeschool students to participate in athletics?
Yes. Mr. O'Brien? Are you here?
Yes, sir, I am.
What did we decide on that? How did we filter that in?
Well, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association does allow for this. I've looked at the proposed policy. I have a couple of questions regarding the association policy, and then what we have proposed under 3620. I'm not sure what the, how the best way to go forward is.
Yeah, so please share your concerns.
Okay, so I'm on page four or five. So some of the things that we have in place are consistent with what the association recommends, and some of them are more than what the association recommends. Under item C, the association indicates that the homeschool student does, does have to be at grade level as measured by some sort of national standardized test. I guess what I'm looking at there is, as we say, prior to the first state of practice, the student must provide results. I wondered if we might want to put prior to the first game or first contest.
I'm fine with that.
That just gives a little bit more flexibility for them to, to get appropriate paperwork in.
And is that in keeping with the recommendations of the association?
The association just says that homeschool students must be on grade level according to a nationally standardized achievement test indicating grade level. So it doesn't give us a time. It just says that they have to be on there. And I would think that this is probably something that most homeschool students would come in with, but it is definitely something that they have to have, and I would say that they need to produce that by the first contest. And if they can't produce it, then obviously they would not be eligible for participation based on what I'm reading from the association and from this policy.
Okay, that's fine. Any objections to that, Jeanette?
No, that's good.
Ms. Dugger?
Well, I, I just pulled up my notes from the last meeting, and I had written that there was going to be a review of the bigger question of dual enrollment of homeschool students, and I'm not sure who was going to bring back information on that, or whether it's been done yet or not. But I, I do think that that's a, that needs to be, or this policy should be in the context of that, that larger question about whether that's going to be permitted. And I think, McKenna, if I'm correct, that's something that needs to be in place before this type of policy could be added.
Yeah, yeah, and it would seem like you probably need other policies about how you're going to allow that dual enrollment before you can do the athletic component.
It was, it was my understanding that we have allowed recently homeschooled students to participate, that that was something that the state did allow for.
The State Athletic Association does allow for the homeschool students to participate. But the question is, are you even allowing the homeschool students to be dual-enrolled in the first place?
We have allowed some students to dual-enroll for this purpose. That is correct. So probably within the last year or two years since this policy became available through the High School Athletic Association. So I would say that we have a large number, but I think that we do have two or three scenarios where we have allowed for this.
And so the issue is that you're, you really need to have a policy in place for the dual enrollment first. And then if a student is duly enrolled under the board's policy, then you can allow the athletic participation. But the athletic participation piece sort of puts the cart before the horse, and in the absence of those other policies to give structure to the dual enrollment process, it's sort of an ad hoc thing that I think is problematic. And so I, again, I, my understanding was, I think from McKenna's notes last time, is that there is no existing policy in place to address the larger question of dual enrollment.
Do we need to push this back until we have that policy in place?
So I think one option would be to, to do that, to hold this completely, or the second option would be to adopt the policy as revised to, to strike the, to strike this homeschool student portion, and then if a structure is in place later, that could be added back in.
Well, I definitely would like to add that structure as soon as possible, because I don't want to... Mr. O'Brien, students who are dual-enrolled right now, aren't they anticipating to be able to participate once again?
Yes, sir, I do believe that that's the case, and I would have to check to see what that actual number is. Like I said, I, nobody has presented this year for that, but it is possible that we could have somebody in from previous years. Many times when the kids come in, they, they come in for a semester, and then typically by the second semester or maybe the next school year, sometimes they, they fully enroll with us. So they, they are no longer a homeschool student at that point, or a dual-enrolled student. They, they fully enroll, and sometimes down the road. That doesn't happen in every case, but... And again, I would suggest that it's a pretty small, a pretty small, small number of students that we have participating.
Yeah, I understand that. Like I said, the, these are taxpayers. I've long thought that they should have a right, and I wouldn't want to strike all of this and then have, you know, even two or three students come to participate and be told, yeah, I'm sorry, we changed the policy. So if we strike all this, wouldn't that disallow any homeschool participation until we can come up with a framework?
You currently don't have this in your policy, so it would actually, I mean, not, you're not, you're striking it from the version that we're sending you, but you're not striking it from what is in your current policy. So not including that language in what you adopt doesn't change anything from how you've been doing it in the past.
Okay, so for the time being, it would still be...
Yeah, so I, I think what McKenna's saying is you currently are doing all of this with no policy at all. And so, you know, it's better to adopt some policies to provide structure, but nothing that you're doing now is going to be impacted if this policy is adopted to, to just include the other extracurricular activity portions.
Okay, excellent. Well, in that case, I think we should go ahead. Unless there are some other objections, I think we should adopt the policy.
And it also, if you would just want to avoid confusion, as, like, when, when you present these to the full board, you present them in strikeout form, correct? Are you presenting?
Yes.
We can just remove that language. Like, there's no reason, because that, I can understand why you're saying like that. Showing that language and having it struck out could lead people to believe that you're no longer allowing that when you did before.
Correct.
Take that language out completely and not have it appear as strikeout.
Thank you. That would be, that would be helpful.
I agree.
McKenna, does the School Board Association have policies about dual enrollment? You don't have a model policy for that?
No, because we weren't even sure if it's actually permissible. We understand that the Athletic Association is allowing these kids to participate, but we don't see where the mechanism for doing that in the first place, for enrolling them. So we were just leaving that up to schools. We had, we're, if anyone was doing the athletic participation, we provided this language because the Athletic Association's saying they can, but we haven't. And I haven't actually seen any policies where people, I have, I mean, I can look, but I haven't seen that I can think of where people have developed dual enrollment policies for homeschool students, so.
So in the interim, if somebody were to present in the spring, we can continue, because we currently are developing policy, so we can continue as we have. In the absence of policy, are we on hold for future students that, that present for this and families that present?
So, you know, that's a difficult question, because if you're currently allowing it, there's an expectation from the community that it will continue. On the other hand, there's no authority in place, no process in place, no structure in place for which dual enrollment or athletic participation by homeschool students can occur. So, you know, it's a little bit difficult to, to know how that even continues if you don't have, you know, don't, don't have the process in place to, to provide those guidelines. So my recommendation would be to try to, to quickly get, you know, something in place and have it so that you at least have a structure when those students participate, prevent, but, you know, certainly it, it's a little bit fraught to continue to allow it if you don't have the policy or the, the clear legal authority in place to, to know how to treat those students.
McKenna, you said there's nothing from the School Boards Association that you know of that exists for something like this?
The School Board Association definitely does not have policies for dual enrollment of homeschool students, no.
Well, I would, I would love, and again, I know it's not many students, but I would love to try to break some new ground, if you're interested.
Perhaps McKenna and I can work on, on putting together something if we can both do some searching and see if there are any examples out there that we could build from and bring something back.
Thank you, Ms. Dugger. Thank you, McKenna. All right, that is 3620. 3445 is being held until we get more guidance there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, 4370, student discipline hearing procedures. I will default to Dr. Faust and Julie for the bulk of these. Mr. O'Brien as well. Dr. Faust, do you have anything here?
This is, okay, so Julie, are you ready?
I'm ready.
That's a cool question. May I ask a follow-up question back to the previous policy? I'm sorry.
No, please.
So on 3620, there were some other things. Was it, was it just the part about homeschool that we are addressing? Or were there other things in 3620 that we wanted to look at?
I was fine with the remainder of the policy, sir. Do you have anything?
Well, I just was, there's a couple of things. We have in this policy, particularly when it, when we look at athletics, and I think the athletics piece probably has influenced the other pieces of this policy, I would think, but we, we specifically state a 2.0 GPA and, and for participation in extracurricular activities. That is also not consistent with the, the Athletic Association. And also, if we're gonna stick with 2.0, I would venture that we say a 2.0 or a 70, which is the minimum C, because actually you can have one or the other, or not. So they don't always match up nicely. So you could have a kid that has a 70 average, but not a 2.0, or vice versa. So I didn't know if we wanted to, to relook at that as a different, as a different way to look at it. So that is not consistent with the High School Athletic Association policy. They do not require a C.
And I have a question about this. Are we, I've come from districts where we did the no pass, no play. Is there a reason why we don't adopt that rule?
So actually, our, our rule is, is more stringent. It is, which the association does allow for. The association does allow for a local district to have a more stringent policy, and so we do. So the association policy just states that you have to pass three out of four from the previous semester. It does not require a C average. I don't know if that clarifies, Dr. Faust.
I'm sorry, didn't we waive our concurrent policy this past board meeting to comply with the high schools?
It'll be happening this board meeting, just for...
This year.
For this year, right, due to COVID.
Okay. Are we gonna have to, are we gonna have to go back and waive it again, since we're passing a new policy next month?
So this, I mean, this language that's inserted in red is from your existing policy that has been added into the School Board Association model policy. So I don't think that the requirement would have to be waived again, since it, if the board waives it tonight, it wouldn't have to be waived again. But this, you know, you, you could certainly put this on hold for one more month if, if that would be preferred. But I guess the bigger question is whether the language from the existing policy is what the committee wants to propose and continue with going forward, or whether there's some, excuse me, some desire to make a change at this point.
Well, I guess I'd ask Mr. O'Brien and Dr. Faust if they feel that the 2.0 is preferable, or if we should align with the High School Athletic Association standards.
So my biggest thing is that I don't want us to, I get it with COVID and all the other opportunities, but I don't want it to be that, and I'll say it this way, that we are... not putting academics above athletics. I I just honestly believe that we have to give students something to fight for when they are in school, and if we lower it so low, then there's nothing for them to fight for, they cannot perform academically with the two point oh, because I'll be honest with you, what college can you get into with the two point oh?
Cape Fear Community College.
Yeah, so my my thing on this is just merely pointing out that we are, we have a more punitive policy than than the rest of the state. I don't, I don't have a problem with with the policy. This is the policy we've had for quite a few years. I don't disagree with you, Dr. Faust. I just wanted to merely point out that this is a difference from what the, from what the Athletic Association requires.
I mean, and I go back, it's more, I guess, personal when I was tutoring kids on SAT. And I see there was a kid who Texas, not Texas Longhorn, but Texas Christian, they were giving him a full ride if he could get a two point five or a seven fifty on the SAT at that time. And he couldn't get either. I mean, we literally had to work hard, like it was tutoring him every single day to get him because we weren't providing the the stringent measures to get them into the school. So a two point oh grade point average, again, like if we have, if we have athletes who are talented and there is a college university that is looking at them, will they accept them at a two point oh is my question.
Dr. Faust, I think it it depends. I I think you're correct in that that is would be difficult to to get in, but I I think it it also depends a little bit on the college, a little bit on NCAA. So you are correct that less than a two point oh would would be, would be difficult. You are correct in that unless it was, you know, a Juco scenario or
Right.
you know, a a community college scenario, which our our community colleges do have great athletic programs as well. So I think you're right in 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 what you're saying. I I would suggest if if we leave the as is, I would suggest that we say two point oh grade point average or a seventy. Even though you would think that that would be the same, there are scenarios where that doesn't always play out. Where a kid does have a numerical seventy average, but not a two point oh.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I have no problem adding that.
So everywhere it says a two point oh grade point average or better, do you want it to say a two point oh grade point average or a seventy percent or better?
Yes.
Dr. O'Brien, anything else?
You know, there's no initials in front of my name, but no, that was the only thing on those policies.
All right, so trying again. Moving on, student discipline hearing procedures. And again, Dr. Faust and Ms. Varnum.
All right, I'm I'm ready. I'm just looking at the version that's up. This version on the screen looks different than the version I have.
I think this is forty three seventy. Are we starting with forty three hundred?
Good.
I was, I was starting with forty three seventy.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna mix them up.
I was just going in the order that they, that we've received them in.
Uh-oh. Forty three hundred is the first.
Yeah, I think they start at the bottom, forty three hundred.
Okay, well, I I can flip them around. Forty three hundred it is.
This policy meeting might be an exercise in stamina today.
Okay, yeah, so what she was saying, though, about forty three seventy, it looked like what was happening with those other policies was happening again, where the stuff that I had added in was appearing as it was struck out instead of being added. So I don't know if that happened in all of them or or how it happened.
Yeah, is it, is it possible that 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 the correct versions and and yeah, forty three seventy did not look correct? But I guess, I mean, certainly I can move on with the others, but I'm wondering about the version that we have loaded.
So can you scroll down on forty three hundred and see in section D? So, yeah, see, look, everything that was added is appearing as though it were removed instead of.
I wonder if it's an issue with Symbly.
Or maybe the settings, are the settings on your word having stuff that appears that's supposed to be appearing as an addition, appearing with a strike through? Although this is being but if on her computer before she uploaded it, her settings are messed up or are different with the the track changes, it could be appearing that way. All this stuff that has the strikeout through it is actually, it should be added.
So if if, I don't know if everyone has the version, McKenna, that you sent in a zip file. If it's possible to somehow get that pulled up and share screen instead of using Symbly, because I'm afraid all the ones in Symbly are going to have issues.
Yeah.
And and if we go directly to the version that McKenna sent in a zip file, we can at least move through the the policies and then adjust the Symbly issue before the meeting tonight. I don't know, McKenna, do you just want to share your screen?
Yeah, yes. I don't, I mean, I would need, I need, let me see, maybe I can share my screen, sure. I Okay, let me try again. Yes, here we go. Okay. Do you see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, so yeah, so this is forty three hundred. I did add some stuff down there, as I mentioned, in D about consequences, different consequences that you had in your current code of conduct during your current policies that we didn't have it here. Other than that, there weren't any changes to this.
Dr. Faust, did you have anything on this?
Not on this one. This one I'm good with.
I do, actually. So I'm wondering if in section D, consequences for violations, we want to mention our school justice partnership, our interagency governance agreement, which includes a a graduated response system for infractions. I feel like this, the the overall forty three hundred might be the best place to mention that. And I can help come up with that language if that's helpful. I just, I just wondered. I can see McKenna's face, maybe I can show mine. Um, so being that that is an interagency governance agreement that we have with our school justice partnership agencies, I just felt like this might be the place to add that. And then the, unless there's any concern with that. And then regarding the serious violations section on page four, the last part of D, it, in having a discussion with Jerel Lewis, our Title IX Director, it really seems like we might need a statement regarding Title IX offenses. And he has drafted a statement that's pretty much as follows for matters involving sexual misconduct, and then he gives examples of sexual harassment, sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence and stalking, referred to board policy seventeen twenty five, Title IX sexual harassment, prohibited conduct and reporting process before taking action. And then certainly would need to add a cross reference to Title IX sexual harassment policy and the grievance process, because the the responses to those serious violations would be a bit different.
Sure, yeah. If you could send me his specific language too, I'll add that. Sounds good.
And in his, I just want to make sure to be clear, in his, he is suggesting the different policies from forty three hundred, probably about twelve or thirteen policies that we would add that to. So I'll, it, I don't know if we need to review that. Or if I can just send that to you for consideration, McKenna.
He wants to add that language to thirteen different policies?
So forty three hundred, forty three oh one, forty three oh two, forty three oh three. It's the same series of policies where there's a range of consequences for certain behaviors. It's kind of like using that same language. I don't know what you think about that.
Okay. Yeah, I I mean, there's no harm in adding it. I don't, I don't know that some of those policies, it would seem like it, sexual harassment isn't actually falling under those policies. It would fall under sexual harassment. There's no harm in adding that.
Okay.
Maybe, Julie, if you could just point those out when we get to the policy and the committee can decide whether it's appropriate in that place or not.
That sounds good.
And these are going on for first reading tonight, so I think that it might, I I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if they are, then we should probably make a note that that there are going to be some changes or they should be held up till the next meeting. I guess what I'm saying is if all the changes are not going to be incorporated by the board meeting, then we probably should either make that known or or hold up.
I would hold off.
Yeah, Dr. Faust, am I correct that these are on for first reading tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Three thousand series is first reading for tonight.
The three thousand, okay, okay, good. I'm sorry for the confusion then. So then we should be able to get those incorporated before the the first reading. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I was beginning to panic to think that I was offering revisions too late. No, I had to look it up. I looked it up. Thank you. Thank you, Don.
Do you have a question on a different part of this one, if I may? On page three, I'm sorry, Julie, were you finished with your your portion?
Yes, almost. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I'm sorry, I'll go after you.
The only other thing was mentioning, when my team and I reviewed this, wondering if we needed to reference definitions and maybe an administrative regulations document, like in in our current eighty four ten, we have a section of definitions where we specifically define offenses and let me see, let me grab it, where we've got the definitions for afra or fighting insubordination, school official, that that type thing. And we have found that to be very helpful. I'm just wondering if that's something that we can still consider keeping in there. Or if that's, and maybe that's what would actually go into a student code of conduct handbook.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien.
I just had a question on page three where we're talking about minor violations of the code of student conduct. And maybe I should read this last sentence where it says, other disciplinary measures or responses may include, but are not limited to. I I guess my concern was down on B. Is that something we're allowed to do? Are we allowed to allow parents to actually, is that a practice that we 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 typically do to allow them to attend in classroom when there's a disciplinary concern?
I don't think it's a common practice, and I think that there are certain situations where that's not appropriate. There have been a couple of situations where I've known that to be done. Of course, it can't be done in a, in a situation where there might be confidentiality, such as a exceptional children's classroom.
I think that was my concern more than, more than anything, but I just, and again, it doesn't say you have to. It says may include, but are not limited to. But I just wanted to to make sure we were okay with that.
I I'm fine with that being removed. I wasn't, I mean, my my team and I didn't focus on that one, but I'm I'm really fine with that being removed if that was something that was just added because it's an eighty four ten.
And I think that's exactly right. These are, these are things that McKenna has pulled over from your existing policy. But now is a great time to sort of look with fresh eyes at those things that have been in the policy for a long time and see if they still make sense.
I would, I would agree with removing that one.
And and then also on page four, and and maybe I'm just not looking at this the right way, the last two, RNS, we have disciplinary reassignment and placement in an alternative school. Is that just like if you have a short term suspension and maybe you're, you're doing your days at a at a different school? Was that where that's covered, Julie, do you think?
Actually, our disciplinary reassignment would be typically what we do with a long term suspension recommendation, where we offer and assign that alternative learning assignment, not really an AOP, but because that process is a little bit different by state board policy. But a disciplinary reassignment is pretty much what our long term suspension program at J C Row is. And then S, placement in an alternative school, can be different than that process. That can be the alternative learning program process that the state board outlines with parental and school agreement based on a referral and not necessarily related to a disciplinary offense.
Yeah, I guess the reason I bring it up is that these are, that's kind of what I thought as well, but these are listed under minor infractions or minor violations. You know, and that seems like the, I I, it seems out of place that these are under a minor infraction area versus what they're typically used for.
Well, and I think, I think under a disciplinary reassignment, that can also be that short term suspension process that we have outlined with J C Row as well.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Oh, could you add placement in an alternative school or program? Would that clarify? Under G. Going back to parental involvement, why don't we just take out such as conference? And that way parental involvement could include all kinds of working conditions for the, to resolve it. This conference is pretty much a given, I think.
I would agree.
I think conferences are an important part. I agree, Ms. Nichols.
And Obi, since you're on, let me ask a quick question. Where it talks about the school shall create a student behavior management plan that elaborates further on processes for addressing student misbehavior and use of intervention strategies, and it goes on further. Wouldn't you think that could be incorporated into the school improvement plan through NC Star?
I I do, and and I think likely they're they're probably in a student handbook as well. I would think that each high school would have that in their student handbook.
Okay, and this does outline that we would have a district wide Okay. And this does outline that we would have a district-wide manual for that, and so we would offer a template for that handbook.
I agree.
All right. Does anybody have anything else on this one? All right. So with those changes, I guess we can go ahead and push that one forward. Onto forty-three oh one, authority of school personnel.
Okay. Should I just share all these? I'm assuming here. Okay.
Thank you, McKenna. And if you need me to, I can, but if you've got them, that'd be great, and I'll just pour through them and talk through them. Okay. Oh, and forty-three oh one, I did not have any suggestions for any changes.
That's pretty easy. Ms. Nichols, does you have anything?
I, I did not. I'm glad to see that the red was not taken out.
All right. Well, moving on to forty-three oh two.
I do want to mention that in forty-three oh one, that would be where we would add that language of Title IX for the, before taking action to refer to Title IX policies. And I think that would fit there, McKenna, don't you think?
In forty-three oh one? Um, this policy really, I, I don't, I, I, I mean, I wouldn't put it in here just because this is talking about really, it, it's just, it's not talking about discipline specifically for specific things, but I mean, again, if you want it in there, there's no harm.
I'm just looking at Jerrel's recommendation, but I, I mean, I certainly appreciate the, the discussion. And I, and I think also the, the logic behind that is that with our Title IX policy being a focus and a priority for us and taking those actions, I think he's looking for every area to make sure that we are reminding folks to refer back to that process. So maybe that, and, and so maybe that's just a discussion for the group.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think it does seem a little redundant to have the same language repeated in all of those places, but if there is a concern that people aren't going to be looking to the Title IX policies when they really should be, then if that would be helpful, you think, to have?
I don't think that would be helpful. I think what needs to happen actually is we train. We need some real solid training on Title IX, and then individuals would know how to follow it. I don't think it's necessary that we put it in every one of our policies. Again, like I said, we, we have to train, train people to know what to look for.
Okay, that sounds good. So that was all I had for forty-three oh one.
All right, forty-three oh two, school plans for management of student behavior.
So this is the one where it, I'm wondering if we want to mention the alignment to school improvement plans. So it says each, the very first words, each school must have a plan for managing student behavior that incorporates effective strategies. I, I think the wording is great. I think that while training, we may want to mention that it would fall under the school improvement plan, but I don't know if we want to mention the school improvement plan in that first paragraph. Dr. Faust, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't.
I just don't want it to seem like there's a separate plan somewhere that's kind of a dangling plan. Next components of the plan, where it mentions the plan should address the process by which student behavior is addressed, including any use of disciplinary committee. I would suggest that we adopt an M T S S language for that, so the use of a multi-tiered systems of support committee, because we don't really operate disciplinary committees, but we definitely operate M T S S systems. Does that sound good to everybody?
I think that would be excellent.
Okay. Did I write that correctly?
Yes, perfect. And that is all I have for that one.
Anybody else? Okay.
Do the board members on the committee have any feedback, I guess, on, on Julie's suggestion about adding the school improvement plan to the first paragraph? And Julie, did you have specific language?
I, I think it could be each school must have a plan and then maybe comma incorporated into the school improvement plan for managing, you know, just put comma incorporating into the school improvement plan. Because I think that also handles the process for developing and evaluating the plan that's down below in B, because that would be the same process for how the, the school improvement plan is managed.
I think that would be fine.
And then the part about, because it, below, it talks about the principal shall report it on annual basis to the superintendent, and that's also resolved through the school improvement plan process. It really sounds like it's talking about the school improvement plan.
Did I do that correctly in the first paragraph?
I think so. I think that looks good.
McKenna, we may want to say into their school improvement plan.
Into it, okay.
There, yes, agree.
Or that.
Thank you, guys. And don't let me do all the talking. I have thoughts, but they're not the only ones.
Are we good with that one? Anyone else?
Does each school have a multi-tiered committee?
Yes.
Okay. Consisting of parents as well as employees?
Yes, at certain levels. So every student in the district, every student in a, in a multi-tiered system is in tier one. And so tier one meetings are pretty much grade level and data discussion, but by the time they get to tier two and tier three, they're involving the parents.
Okay, good.
All right. So forty-three oh two R. Rules for use of seclusion and restraint in schools, and I imagine, Ms. Varnum, you will probably be taking us through this one as well.
Yes, this one is very straightforward, matches House Bill ten thirty-two very well. The only questions that I have are on page five. So let's see, seven, under seven, and moving on to page five, B. Notice to parents, it, there's a reference to subsection G one, and I did not find subsection G one.
Yeah, sorry about that. I changed the format and I missed that.
I looked and looked.
No. We, we just recently, we, the, these administrative regulations now should be formatted as regulations instead of as policies, and it had been formatted as a policy, and I tried to quickly format it as a regulation, and I missed the internal reference. Okay, so G would be.
I think there's also a reference to G three.
Yes, there, there is down below.
Okay, I'll fix that. So G A B C D E F G would be seven, seven C. Is that correct?
Let's sit in.
Oh, no, I, that's.
That wouldn't be right, because that'd be below it.
So, yeah, sorry, G one would be seven, A, G three would be seven C.
Okay. Yes.
Catch, sorry about that.
So G one is seven A, and then G three is seven C, right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It was a good test.
But that's the, that was the only time you caught any internal.
Yes, I didn't find any others.
All right, I'll double-check it, though. Thank you.
And that's all I have on that one.
This one follows the statute, so there's really not much to do.
Yes, it's just like reading the ten thirty-two.
All right, forty-three oh three, fair and consistent discipline administration.
So on, on this one, in section A, one, the board directs the superintendent. And I get the language in this one, but I have a question about, there are many places throughout these policies where it mentions superintendent and then says superintendent or designate, and it, I, I thought, thought that it seemed a little inconsistent, and so I felt like we might have to determine where, intentionally where we are mentioning designate. Now, this one, because the board directs the superintendent, that one's probably, probably makes sense.
Yeah, I think it starts with the superintendent.
Other than that, on, on this one, I don't, I don't see anything other than just noticing areas where if this goes into policy, of course, we would, you know, provide the board, the discipline data submitted. It's not generally something that's been done, but I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So are we sticking with superintendent and designate? What are we doing here?
On forty-three oh three, I think it makes sense to leave it as superintendent, and I'll just know in these areas that I'll be providing that for, Dr. Faust. There are other areas where I have questions more about where it says designate, so this policy seems fine for me.
Ms. Nichols?
I agree.
Okay, forty-three oh three on for first reading.
So no changes to that one?
No.
All right, and up next is forty-three oh seven.
I just wondered on this one, if the word should be afforded instead of accorded. Under second paragraph, all students with disabilities will be accorded all rights, if that should be afforded all rights.
I think afforded is better. Deborah, or Ms. Dagner, what would be proper legal language?
I think that they're really sort of synonyms, but either one would be fine. I, I don't, I don't think that there's a, a difference. I mean, accorded, bestowed, permitted, afforded, I mean, they're all sort of synonyms, so you know, it's really a matter of preference.
Then I'm fine with it. There's no need to make a change. As long as it still fits.
Want to change it, Mr. Ware?
Yeah, I think we should change it. All right, if there's nothing else, once, twice, forty-three ten, integrity and civility.
I don't have any recommendations for changes on this one.
I was just curious with regards to plagiarizing, if we wanted to strengthen that language a bit. Maybe adding the words either knowingly or unknowingly in there. That would be in A, section three.
I assume you're thinking that sometimes this happens and kids do this unknowingly, correct? Like they, they, they don't know the, the proper procedure or, or they unknowingly put something in a, a, a paper that they, they don't cite correctly. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
I, I think that for most, or for many of these types of violations, it is, a part of the violation is an intent to do something wrong. And if, if someone is, you know, walking down the hall and bumps into you and knocks you down, and it's an accident, it's different than someone pushing you down intentionally. And, and I'm not saying that it's, you know, you, you can't have things that are unintentional be subject to discipline or, or encourage them to be careful about doing things, but I don't, you know, I would just point that out that in many of, you know, forgery has an intent. Cheating obviously has an intent, so just, that would be my only point to just think about that. Whether it's more of an educational issue to teach students how to properly use resources and research materials to create their thoughts and, and distinguish that from plagiarizing by intentionally copying.
Ms. Dagner, this is LaShawn Smith, and, and I would agree with you. I think that if it was done unknowingly, then from my perspective, we would want to use that as a teaching opportunity with students. And then also understanding that these policies govern students essentially through kindergarten through twelfth grade. So if there's not the ability to have some distinction on grade level, then I would be hesitant to hold kindergarten, first, second, and third graders to the same standards as we would students in the upper grades.
Okay, excellent point.
And, and the fact that the last section talks about a range of consequences that may be imposed, and we know that, that each infraction will go through an investigation process that includes the intentionality and culpability. I think that those things could be hashed out, so I, I would agree.
All right, that's, that's excellent. I probably look at this stuff differently from an educator perspective at the higher levels. So I appreciate you guys walking me through that. Thank you. If nobody has anything else, I'm fine with the rest of forty-three ten. All right, moving on to forty-three fifteen, disruptive behavior.
I don't have any recommendations for changes on this one.
Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
This one seemed pretty straightforward. All right. Forty-three sixteen.
You have a lot to say on this one, I think, Mr. Boya. Your committee spent a lot of time with it.
Yes, it certainly did. So student dress code. Yes, it certainly did. So, uh, student dress code.
Okay, let me get this pulled out.
Well, while McKenna is, um, pulling that one up, um, sorry to, to go back to the other one. I was trying to shuffle too many policies here in one time. The language and disruptive behavior, uh, under two references the dress code. And it says, um, appearance or clothing that violates a reasonable dress code adopted and publicized by the school. And I, and I wonder whether it makes more sense to include just the reference to the board's dress code policy in that section. Because, because it's really just repetitive and it seemed a little confusing to me to read it, to hear, have a reference to a school dress code and then a reference to the board's dress code, which incorporates the same thing.
Do you want to just actually eliminate all of it and just say, appearance or clothing that violates policy forty-three sixteen, student dress code?
That, that was, that was what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
That sounds good.
We should change that in our policy, too. Good suggestion.
So, um, I'm not sure if, we had a dress code committee, as most of you know, and we came up with a lot of different changes. Uh, I would personally love to strike, uh, number six. But I, I don't know how the rest of the board would feel about that, doing it without going back through that committee process. I guess my question is, would that be appropriate to make changes now, given that we had that committee? Ms. Dagnall?
I don't, I, I unfortunately know the history of the dress code committee, but certainly I think that this policy committee is the current existing committee to make recommendations to the full board. And, um, so I, I don't have a problem with making changes if this committee determines that it's appropriate and wants to send something to the board, and then there can be a full discussion by the board.
I think the mid-thigh, uh, piece is fine in terms of accomplishing what we wanted to accomplish. There was some, uh, gender neutral language that the committee added. McKenna, I can get that for you, but I would like to see that added to this policy as well.
So Nelson, are you saying keep number six as is?
I would personally like to get rid of number six. Leggings are just what a lot of middle school kids wear. And I don't see them as impacting the, you know, the quality of my kids' education.
In elementary, my eight and 10-year-old dressed exclusively in leggings.
Yeah, that, that one, uh, and I know we've had some issues before, um, where you've had kids dress coded and it's, you know, uh, I would prefer to see this uniform. I don't know if there's a way we can, um, limit the stricter dress codes enacted by our middle school principals. I don't know if Dr. Faust would even have an appetite for something like that, but each middle school has a different dress code.
Wow, that is, is that absent or does it fall in line with what the, 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 the board policy is when you say the, the middle schools? Because I, I didn't even realize there was a policy, because when you walk the buildings, you don't. I've seen shorts that are, I mean, that are extremely short. Yeah, so I didn't, yeah, I'll just stop there.
So I, I don't know about all the middle schools. I know Myrtle Grove adheres strictly to the, the board policy. My daughter's school, Trask, you know, they're very regimented in terms of what's allowed, what's not allowed. And I know there was an issue of dress down days. They would charge students a dollar every day to dress down for the week. So, you know, it's, it's a big fundraiser for the PTAs.
Should not be a part of a, a policy.
Yeah, I, I don't, I really agree with you, Ms. Nichols. I don't think that our, you know, our kids in middle school should be charged with that.
Mr. Boyer, that, these additions in red, I assume, came from the existing dress code policy. And it incorporates nothing of what the policy or the dress code committee proposed. And so I wonder if it doesn't, doesn't really make sense to start from the policy that the old, um, you know, that the old committee, the dress code committee had already, you know, worked through, and maybe that's a better starting point. Um, and I don't, I don't know where that might be found, but, um, if you've already hashed through the leggings and the other issues, it doesn't seem to make sense to, to start from going back to square one if the dress code committee's got something that we could work from in this committee, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's a good point. Could we hold this until you have that policy to work from?
And I think at this time of the year with, with COVID and everything going on, this would not be well received by the parents or students at this time. So I would hold it and get it in place that works.
And, and another issue to consider is whether the committee wants to recommend that individual schools not have the discretion to deviate from this and, and that everyone will, will follow the same dress code.
So schools who require, um, or not require, but encourage is, uh, school colors and T-shirts and, um, khakis or whatever, they can still do that separately?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, again, I think that's a discussion to have when you, when you decide what should go into the board level policy. I mean, you can have, um, that, that schools can have, and it's not going to violate any of these standards to have school colors, I wouldn't think. But that's almost requiring khakis is almost more of a uniform requirement. And you might want to consider whether individual schools can adopt a uniform policy.
Yeah, I, I, some are very close to that definition. So I think that would be a, a discussion, uh, that I would like to have with the board and get the superintendent's take on that as well.
And generally speaking, um, you, your policies allow your schools to have more stringent rules than what your policies require. So if you want your schools to have a more standardized dress code throughout the districts, then you should, you should probably put that in the policy that this is what the dress code is going to be and that they cannot make additional rules on top of it. And if you, if you have the, um, a different version and more recent version that your policy committee created, if you want to send that to me, I can change all of this to use your more recent language from, from the policy committee or from your, um, dress code committee, if someone can send that to me.
Yeah, that sounds good. It was not actually, uh, it was passed by the committee. The board never took it up because of all the things that we had going on at the time and then COVID. And, uh, but, yeah, it's a good place to start.
So if you could keep side by side, so they can see the changes and whatever, because you're going to have four new board members that are, have a big responsibility here in this particular policy.
Can I bring up a, a different, um, question on this particular policy?
By all means.
Uh, item number one, I'm wondering if we might be able to tweak the language there regarding, um, ID cards. I wonder if we might tweak the language to say, instead of having display, if we could just say possess and present as requested by school staff. Because the way it reads right now, the kids are supposed to have their ID card displayed all the time. And, and while I, I think our schools try to do that, I think it's, it's sometimes, um, problematic for them.
Thank you for bringing that up, sir. And I was actually curious about whether we want to strike that or just get rid of forty-three seventeen, because to have it in both places seems redundant.
Well, especially if you're not, if it's not something they're required to actually wear, it doesn't, it's not really, it shouldn't be in this policy. So we can just take that whole thing out.
Yes, please.
I don't know if it's a bad idea for them to have a, a school ID on their, you know, on their person. Um, I just, I, I think that what I'm looking at is the actual displaying it at all times. So I don't know how that factors in, but.
Well, the next policy will address the fact that they have to have it.
Okay.
So we're going to table this, um, for the time being, and we'll bring it back up next month. All right, forty-three seventeen, student ID cards. And there in the first sentence, it says, required to display a student ID at all times. Again, I don't, right, Mr. O'Brien, you can correct me, but it seems like you're saying we're not doing that, and I'm pretty sure we're not doing that. So I think more appropriate language would be all high school students are required to maintain on their person a student ID card at all times when they are on school campus and present it as requested.
That would be my, that would be my recommendation, and, and I feel like the, um, the high school principals would, would support that as well.
Sorry, could you repeat that? Are required to?
Maintain.
Correct.
A student ID card. And keep the rest at all times when they are on campus. And present it as requested by administration.
Could, could we say school staff?
Yes.
All, all high school students are required to maintain a student identification ID card at all times when they are on school campus and presented as requested by school staff.
Yes, do we want to say on their person? Is it okay if it's in their locker or somewhere else? Don't we want to have it on them?
I think the goal would be for them to have it on them in case a staff member needs to know who the kid is. They could say, you know, can I see your ID, that sort of thing. So, you know, having it in the locker or in the car kind of defeats the purpose. So I think we want it to be on the student, but not necessarily displayed or, or hanging around their neck or like we've, we've done in past years.
Could they have it in their cellphone?
That's, that's a, that's a great suggestion, actually. I mean, if, if you could, I guess, produce a picture of it. I don't know how that sounds to the legal folks, but that makes sense.
Well, there's a, that, that's going to come up in a later policy about cell phones, at which I had some comments about. So I think there's some inconsistency about not, not having your cellphone out, the language in that policy. But if it's technologically feasible, um, I don't know that there's a problem with it. But McKenna, could you, um, share your screen when you're making those changes so everyone can see them?
There we go.
And I would agree with that wording. It answers some questions that I had as well.
Anybody else? I imagine this one will be a great deal of fun. This is forty-three eighteen, use of wireless communication devices. Ms. Dagnall, is this the one you had some questions about?
Yes, found my me button. So in the first, um, the first paragraph, the second sentence, it says, therefore, students are permitted to possess such devices on school property so long as the devices are not activated, used, displayed, or visible during the instructional day or as otherwise directed by school rules or school personnel. And it seems to me that it would be better to say unless otherwise directed by school rules or school personnel, because then you are consistent with the next paragraph that says, administrators may authorize individual students to use wireless communication devices when there's a reasonable need. So, um, that, that prohibition in the first part of that sentence just doesn't seem to be consistent, um, with the allowance of it for some, some other purposes. But whether, again, and I'm not, I'm not sure historically or currently how much students are allowed to or, um, expected to use cell phones for any reason during, you know, are they used? Can kids pull out their cellphone to use as a calculator in math class? Or is it something that is, they're supposed to keep it in their bookbag or their locker all day until the, the bell rings and they call their parents to come pick them up? I, I just don't know what the actual practice is.
And again, sort of like the dress code, it varies from school to school. I know at Roland Grice, they have, it's either Roland Grice or Myrtle Grove, they have charging stations, um, in some of their common areas. So it, it trasks, they don't pull it out or you'll lose it. So it all depends on the school.
And again, is that something that there's a need to, um, make more consistent? Or is it working the way it is now?
I mean, I think it would be, honestly, I think we just need to clean up the, the wording, because then we have the bring your own device. And what if they are using their cellphone as their device? But then we also have it here. I think honestly, we're just all over the place with it.
I agree.
Dawn, is the bring your own device, I thought that was something that we had taken out that was, um.
We took the wording out as far as it's not an initiative, but yet we still allow students when they need to bring. So, I mean, we, we have not required, there's some districts that actually require students to bring their own device if they have it. We do not. So, um, it's, it's not a program that says you have to bring your own device to use it. However, at the same time, um, we don't have enough devices for every student. So, um, Dr. Faust is giggling, and I agree with him 100%. It's, a lot of it's semantics. But he is correct, because there are some students, but that is the device they use when they're allowed to use a device in class to get on the internet, look something up or to, to respond to something teachers have posted.
Well, maybe then in that, in that same first sentence, it should say, unless otherwise allowed or directed by school rules or school personnel. And that way, it is clear that if you have permission or if it's, um, something that's allowed in a particular classroom, um, that it can be done.
Yeah, I would like to have something in here where we're talking about, you know, because this is pretty much, you're talking about cell phones. Even though it says wireless communications, it is pretty much cell phones we're talking about. Where they are not to be using the 3G, 4G carrier service. Because if they're using this device and they're on the internet or they're using their 3G, 4G service, then they're getting to all that social media and into anything. I mean, nothing's filtered. They get to whatever they want to get to. And in our other policy, we said that, you know, with the bring your own device in that acceptable use, we did say that if students are using their own device, that they could not use the 3G, 4G service, but it's not in here. I don't believe.
I, I think that's a great point, Dawn, to, um, if they're at school and they're not connecting to the school system, wireless or internet, you know, wireless, I'm, I'm using the wrong words, but they're not connecting to the school district's system, then they're not, uh, they're not filtered and they can access things that would not be permissible to access.
Correct.
One quick point, can we strike, um, language that says? language that says, in addition, students who are driving a vehicle on school grounds will not use wireless communication device? Yeah, I just don't see us enforcing that. I, I think that's really difficult to enforce. It's already against the law to operate a cellphone that's not hands-free. I just, uh, I don't think that needs to be in there.
Your poli-, your old policy was saying even if it was hands-free, they could not use it.
Right. Um, and again, I just don't see us enforcing that. I don't think we have a mechanism to enforce it, so.
Okay.
Ms. Nichols, um, you have any thoughts on this?
I think that whole sentence was added about using the cellphone while driving on school grounds when the law came into effect that you're not allowed a cellphone while you're driving up the street. So I think that was added to be, to kind of in some kind of compliance with the law that was out there. I don't know if we needed it or not, but I'm, that I believe is why it was added.
I, I, I agree with the sentiment. I just, like I said, I, I don't see us having a way, a way to enforce that. I think it would just.
Well, I suppose the question is whether or not you want to um be able to, to punish. So if a student is driving and they have a cellphone uh, and they're using it and, and they're seen, and whether that's something that you want to be able to include as a, as a consequence or misconduct, or whether you want to leave it entirely to, as a law enforcement matter.
I would prefer to leave it to law enforcement. Things have changed substantially when it comes to Bluetooth in cars. I mean, kids are just going to turn them on. Most of them are to call a friend or their parents right away anyway.
And, and as I said before, I think this is a, an appropriate time to consider a language that was added, you know, years ago, and whether you still need to have it, so.
So I'm wondering, uh, as well, uh, in terms of language, since you just referenced that, um, under B, consequences for unauthorized use, um, second sentence, first paragraph, I'm wondering if we need to reword that. I, I don't think that is, I think if a phone is confiscated, it is typically returned to the student at the end of the day unless it is a persistent problem. I don't think that we are holding on the phones until parents can pick them up, you know, a day or two days later, or that sort of thing.
Absolutely. Great catch.
Uh, s- about that sentence, I'm just wondering if we want to leave it open to any school employees confiscating devices? And um, when my team and I reviewed these, we just wondered about the liability. So any in, school employee confiscating, and then what's the liability for, um, you know, if that's lost or damaged while it's in the employee's hands?
Would you like to limit that to teachers and administrators?
I, I, I think so. I would entertain thoughts on that. I don't know that we need to leave it open to just any school employee, though.
I agree. I think, uh, certainly teachers, certainly administrators. I really, like you said, they're expensive devices. Um, you don't want, you know, you want to limit that liability as much as possible, I would think.
That all look good, the changes?
Thank you. Just where do we need to add the whole not connecting and having to use the, if they're going to use it, having to use, um.
So that would go in A somewhere. Also, I wanted to ask about that. So are you, do you want to say that they're not, if they're using the device to access the internet, then they have to use the school's wifi and they may not use, they may not use their cell service to access the internet?
Yes.
Not limited, because what if, what, because this policy does leave open, like, a teacher may give a child permission to call their parent about something.
They. We look at the ba-, um, pair, under A, the first paragraph, where it says, students and administrators may authorize individual students to use the devices for instructional purposes. Provided that they supervise a student during use. How about we say there, when they're using it for instructional purposes, then they're using the um school system's wifi instead of three G, four G.
Um, Dawn, do you, do you want to limit it, though, to instructional purposes, or just, I mean, do you want students um, to be able to at lunchtime pull out their phone and download stuff from the internet using four G? I, I guess that, that's the question. If they're using it at school at any time to connect to the internet, they should be using the school system filtered network.
Very good point, very good point.
But, but, and again, I may be off base on the technology. If they just want to make a phone call, that, that wouldn't be affected. Correct?
Correct.
Let me, I'm going to pull up. Um, okay. So the language, I'm going to, the language from thirty-two twenty-five, we can ju-, we can take that and say students were using the, using it to access the internet, ma-, yeah. Um, it must access the internet through school system wireless network?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it is, is wherever they're accessing the internet, whether it be instructional or during lunch or whatever the case may be.
Is that adequate, or do you want additional language?
I mean, that reads fine to me if, if Ms. Stagner agrees.
Need, um, McKenna, does it say anything about during the school day or at school, um, act, during school activities?
It just says, well, it doesn't. So do you want it to limit it to, do you want that limited?
I mean, I, it, it seems seems that it's going to be while, while on school premises or, or um, during school activities. It's not necessarily just during the school day, because it could be after school as well. I don't know. I mean, if you don't, i- if folks don't think it's a problem, I, I think that's fine.
I mean, so all of these policies, um, it says that they all apply while on school premises or at school events and all that. So, I mean, this would apply. And the next paragraph even talks about how, using it after school too, about how we're going to limit, maybe you won't be allowed to use it on the school bus. If, so, I mean, I think it would prohibit, it would say that anytime you're on school grounds, you need to be using the school's inner wireless.
That's fine.
Is, is that practical, though? I mean, when somebody goes to a football game, they can't pull out their, you know, their a high school senior, they can't use their four G?
I'm pretty sure they'll be using it.
I'm a thousand percent sure they'll be using it. So I'm a little concerned about a policy that says, well, now you can't use your four G, you got to log on to wireless.
But does, does ours actually even reach outside?
Um, it not to a football field at once.
Do you want to limit it to if they're using the wireless communication devices to access the internet inside school buildings?
Honestly, I would just prefer to limit it to during instructional time. I really don't have any problem with the students using um, their, you know, devices if it's permitted during lunch or during a study hall, again, if it's permitted. In fact, I prefer them not use our network since we're using our bandwidth for a lot of other things right now.
Okay, so then, that means then they will be doing all that social media, TikTok, Instagram, Snapchat.
That's the, that's the issue, Mr. Billy, that, that you have students who, while at school, and maybe it's just saying while at school, um, because they, they will be on, doing things um, connected that, that cannot be filtered. Um, and that's been a concern. Um, Dawn and I have talked about, you know, the filtering issues and the, the access issues. Um, and so while students are on school grounds and under the, under the supervision and care of school personnel and school system, um, that is one tool that you have to make sure they're not accessing inappropriate and prohibited things, is to make sure that the school system's filtered internet service is being used.
Uh, I understand. Would, and it wouldn't be easier just to ban those sites? I guess not. All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, it's, y- you can ban, you can ban them, but you can't police that. You, you just have no way of monitoring and policing it unless you go through the, the school system's internet. So, so maybe it's just during the school day, um, accessing the internet during the school day.
I think the school day would be best.
I'm wondering if in the opening paragraph, we also need to just take out paging devices.
Are there still? Oh, yeah, probably need to.
Thank you.
I thought it was a new thing. I was going to head out to get one.
You could probably get rid of the two-way radios, too.
I was going to ask that.
Dawn, thank you.
Actually, that's, that's still been a thing that, that kids have, have been using.
Really?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I know you can still buy two-way radios, but I, I just, I don't even know if you can find a paging device out there anymore. I'm not sure.
Anything else on forty-three eighteen?
So under A, is it only the administrators that can give the students the permission to use the device, or can the teachers?
Do you want to add teachers?
I think it'd be easier for the administrators if they weren't called to make that decision.
Well, it says for personal purposes is what it was saying. So administrators just for personal purposes, and then teachers for instruction.
But if you're in the classroom and so they would have to call an administrator to make that decision?
I agree with Ms. Nichols on this. I think that a, a kid, you know, says, I need to call my mom to check on a ride home or something like that. I don't know that we need an administra-, I, I would think a teacher could make that call.
I would think so.
I would agree.
Yep, anything else?
You probably need to remove that um, parking area thing since we got rid of it down there at the bottom.
Sure.
You want to say communication devices, since you've used that previously? Um, last line, or are the personal wireless communication devices?
Um, well, it's a cellphone or a device, so we could change it.
Yeah.
All right, is that it for this one? All right, see you on for first reading. Forty-three twenty tobacco use.
I don't have any um, changes for this one.
Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
My only question about that was the um, nicotine cessation products, and I, I don't know whether that um, is addressed in a medication administration policy, or whether there's a, if this is something, I'm just not as familiar with it, whether that's a prescription um, item or um, some kind of a medication. McKenna, can, can you answer that? Do you know?
So I was looking into it when I was adding that language from their policy. I, I, I'm not exactly sure. It looks kind of like those products are over the counter, but maybe not, you can't sell them to minors. Seventeen-year-old students, they could be using them, but otherwise, I mean, I, I, it sounded like you couldn't sell them to minors, but I would assume a doctor could prescribe it. I don't, I, I don't know, but.
So I'm just thinking, i- is there going to be an, an administration of medication or a?
Yes.
So students can't, under some policies, students can't even have Advil in their purse and use it during the school day. And so if, if you're going to include a nicotine um, patch or chewing gum or something that might not be permissible for, for minors to have, or it might be a prescription medication, I just wanted to be sure that there's a cross-reference at least, or that maybe there's a thought about referencing um, that it might be, might be limited, you know, not everyone can have, have this kind of material on them.
Yeah, that would make, well, yeah, that would make sense. Um.
So it seems like really defining legally possessing the nicka-, the um, the smokeless product.
So actually, i- if we're going to consider ni-, um, the products designed to help you stop smoking, if they're considered medication, then you don't really even need to have it addressed in here, because you will have a policy about how you're allowed to possess ma-, medicine, and that's, a- and being in possession of that medicine in accordance with the policy is not a violation of any of the other tied drug policies. So we could just remove that and it will be addressed with the medicine policy.
It, it seems, i- i- it just seemed a little um, troublesome to have it here like this without any context, and that was my, my concern.
Right, the only, the only thing would be, um, going back to the logic of having it in here, is that it not be con- considered a tobacco product. Um, because it's defining the tobacco product, um, and saying that these cessation products are not tobacco products. So if we remove it, I think that's one thing. If we leave it in and cross-reference to um, basically how they are legally possessed, then maybe that would clarify.
Yeah, which way would you prefer to do it?
I'd prefer to just take it out.
Okay. That is easier.
Do we need to have anything in here? And I'm just asking the question about confiscating um, products. I'm, I'm really thinking about e-cigs and, and vaping devices. Do we need anything about that in there, or is that covered under B, under consequences? Because we're, we're probably confiscating more devices like this than we are cell phones.
Definitely.
I don't know if it's covered. I'm just asking the question.
W- wouldn't it be uh, consistent with section D? Wouldn't it be consistent with Section D of Policy 4300? Or do we need to just, I feel like we're covered there, but.
I mean, I think it would be. You can add it if you want, but I don't think you have to, in order to be allowed to confiscate it.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Anybody need a cigarette break? Policy forty-three twenty-eight, gang-related activity.
How about twenty-five? Let's skip that one.
Twenty-five?
Drugs and alcohol?
Oh, yes. Drugs and alcohol. Policy forty-three twenty-five.
The only, I had a couple of questions on this one. So, defining, in the second paragraph, I'm wondering if we need to define direct and immediate impact, because it goes on to say applies to students while on property, school property, or school-sponsored interactivity, whether owner or school property, and at any other time or place where the conduct is reasonably expected to have a direct and immediate impact. You know, we, we often get into scenarios where we're trying to determine off-campus, how off-campus events translate to disciplinary action. And I, I find that it would be helpful to define direct and immediate impact.
So, do we have a question before she starts? Don't we have to provide, it has to be a nexus with the, with the, the infraction in the school, in, go ahead, go ahead. I'll let you be the lawyer.
So, you're exact, you're exactly right, Dr. Faust. I mean, this direct and immediate impact on the orderly and efficient operation of the schools is really the legal standard that comes from those cases that talk about, you, you cannot discipline for behavior unless there's that nexus to the school operation. And, and so, unfortunately, it's difficult to define in a policy what a direct and immediate impact is. That's the legal standard. I think this is, again, one of those that really requires training. So, training administrators on the types of scenarios and how to think through, because it's such a fact-specific, case-by-case analysis of whether there's that nexus to the school for off-campus behavior. Obviously, if it occurs on the school grounds, there's not a question, but does the conduct, you know, if they're selling or distributing controlled substances off-campus, what is the direct and immediate impact? Well, are they selling it to other students? You know, is it bleeding over into the school day? Are they making those deals at school, and then, and then they're selling and delivering it off-campus outside of school? So, that's a, I think, something where training of administrators is really important, but I don't know that you can define that in a policy. Just my two cents.
Would it make sense? Is it, is it necessary to have the word immediate? Because I think just having a direct impact would clear up a lot of that.
Well, I do, again, I, I don't have those cases right at hand, but I, I feel fairly certain that that is the language that defines the legal standard. And McKenna may be able to shed more light on that.
Yeah, I'd have to double-check, but I'm pretty sure that that language comes from the court cases.
And so part of the reason for having that in there is to put students on notice. And again, while it's a case-specific, fact-intensive analysis, the, the courts, if ever challenged, are going to look to see whether your policies put students on notice of what kind of behavior that could potentially result in discipline.
I'm also wondering, in the, the second page, under services for students, C, a school employee may assist a student seeking help with a chemical dependency problem without being required to divulge information. I was just curious why some language about counseling and treatment is not included in this one, while, while we have no mention of counseling and treatment, as we do in Policy forty-three twenty with regard to tobacco. Because we, we do engage in referral for counseling and treatment through our school-based partners, especially at the high schools, through our Well, We Can Help the Health Access for Teens program.
I think that makes sense, Julie. And my, my question about that paragraph is whether, and I didn't have an opportunity to, to do any additional research on it, but whether there would ever be a situation where there would be a requirement, a mandatory reporting requirement to divulge some information. And, and I, you know, again, maybe adding something there, unless required by law, or something might be helpful. It just seems to me if a student is endangering themselves or others, that there might be a mandatory reporting requirement.
I would agree with that.
I'd agree.
So, could we, could we add some statement in there about, you know, absent any mandatory reporting for safety issues, but then also add similar language from forty-three twenty on, you know, administration consulting with county health department or other pre-pri organizations?
I just made some changes.
Thank you, McKenna. That looks good.
Is that okay? Yeah, that's, that's quickly, so I need to reread that.
I just had one other minor suggestion, and that's in paragraph seven up above. It talks about substances, and it seems to me that, that the example that follows of matches and lighters aren't really substances, and maybe, say, items, items or substances.
Actually, Miss Dang, I was just gonna recommend getting rid of that. You can what if so many things to death, and I don't think every single thing needs to be in a policy. I don't, this, I just don't see that needs to be.
Number seven, McKenna.
Sorry, where are you?
Seven. Principal may authorize lawful use of substances.
So, do you want to delete the whole thing, or add the items?
I personally would like to delete the whole thing, unless somebody can give me a compelling reason to keep it.
And it seems to me that if, if there's a chemistry project that requires fire, or matches, or lighters, that the, the teacher and principal would be supervising that, and the student wouldn't need to have that on their person otherwise. So, I, I don't have any problem with deleting that paragraph.
I would agree, and that would be resolved, if there were a situation that would be resolved through the investigation, where the intention and culpability would be included.
Okay, so we've covered tobacco, we've covered drugs, alcohol. Let's talk gangs. Forty-three twenty-eight.
Okay, I'll jump right in. On Section B, under notice, there's a section in here, in addition to the Code of Student Conduct and all student handbooks, it goes on to say that the Student Code of Conduct or other similar materials also shall provide the addresses of websites that contain additional information identifying gang signs, symbols, clothing, and other gang indicators. Just curious as to that requirement. Completely agree with the consultation with law enforcement about having gang indicators and symbols, and all those maintained in a list of current examples that are available in the office and easily accessible to the school or anyone else who is interested. I'm just a little concerned about the perceived advertising of websites that could further instruct curious students on gang signs, symbols, being in the Code of Student Conduct. So, wondering about the requirement on that.
That's an excellent point.
So, the require, if you're going to punish a kid for wearing some sort of gang sign or symbol, or expressing some sort of gang symbol, they have to be on notice that that is in fact a gang sign or symbol. So, you have to give them notice somehow of what you're considering to be gang signs and symbols.
Could that be addressed more appropriately through the range of consequences, where first offense is, is clarification and instruction on what that is, and then, so that, I mean, first offense is, is an instructional opportunity anyway? Could that be handled through a range of consequences, as opposed to publicizing websites?
So, the policy does actually say before disciplinary consequences for, like, wearing a gang sign, they're going to receive an individualized warning that the condemnation. Um, Deborah, do you, what do you think about not giving?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the case, you know, that was in the North Carolina courts that really defined and struck down as unconstitutional, a gang policy that was unconstitutionally vague, because it didn't give students notice of what clothing and symbols and behavior was prohibited. So, I don't have a problem with not putting it on, you know, advertising on websites, as long as there are other methods for appropriate notice. And it could be that, I mean, I think that whole paragraph B is about notice, and those, those notices need to be updated regularly. You can't necessarily do that by reprinting the Student Code of Conduct, so that requires having the list in the school sys, in the school administrative office, or somewhere in the school. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine to delete that last sentence about websites, as long as the other areas of notice are, are maintained up to date. And it could be that it's just in the Code of Student Conduct, and there's a link to the New Hanover County School site that has the updated list, so a student could easily get to it and see if there are any changes made, and that would be a central place where it could be maintained up to date. Does that address the concern, Julie?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think the, the whole notice piece is, is interesting to me, just as I recall as a, as a former principal, that sometimes this information was, was not something that was, was necessarily put out. And again, I think that that was probably a little bit more controlled by law enforcement, but I understand that if it has to be in policy, it has to be there. I just, I didn't know if there was any, you know, do, do we allow, like, local law enforcement to, to look at this as well, in regards to, is this what they would typically recommend? And then the other thing I, I see is, is that it kind of looks like the, the principal becomes the, the expert on this, where I'm not sure law enforcement would be the expert. But, but again, I'm just putting that out for discussion.
Now, I think that this definitely anticipates that principals or other school administrators will be in, in frequent contact with law enforcement to understand what the most up-to-date symbols are. That's, I don't think there's any expectation that principals are somehow going to be able to determine this without law enforcement. And McKenna, maybe you can point to where that, I'm not finding it right now. I thought I saw it in the policy.
The first sentence of Section B says that the superintendent, as in, they shall regularly consult with law enforcement officials to maintain current examples. So, that what the principals are gonna be maintaining in their office is what they're gonna be getting from the superintendent who has conferred with law enforcement to keep that up to date.
Yes, and we do that. And, and so I feel like that part is, is covered. And there was one section, I was wondering if we want to refer to our, well, actually, never mind. I think it probably is best to leave it with consulting with law enforcement officials. We have that more specifically defined in our SRO MOU, but I think the way it's worded here is, is fine.
So, is that correct, the way the sentence I deleted? That's what we agreed on?
Yes. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for forty-three twenty-eight?
How, how would you keep the record of whether their student had been previously counseled on the violation?
Those would go into our Student Discipline and Intervention System, called Educator Handbook. And so, all infractions, small or, you know, minor or serious, go into Educator Handbook, and the more serious required reportable infractions feed into Power School Discipline Data. But all interventions and any kind of corrections or counseling for infractions goes into that system.
Okay, so all administrators and teachers would know that. Is that correct?
They have been trained on that, and that is an expectation, yes.
And it is in writing in their handbook?
So, the, we were talking about this, actually, this week. The Code of Conduct or Student Handbook has really thus far consisted of Policy eighty-four ten, and the implementation of these, or adoption of these policies, will create a different standard of a Code of Conduct handbook, and those would be included, yes.
Okay, good.
All right, we can move that one forward. Committee members, it is eleven thirty-two. This meeting is scheduled to go until twelve noon. And I would like to be respectful of everybody's time, and there's a board meeting to prepare for tonight. So, I don't think we're gonna get through all of these, but if it's all right with everybody, we will go until twelve o'clock, and then you guys can prepare, or not prepare, but I do want to be respectful of people's time. Three hours is a very long meeting. So, unless there are any objections, that will be my plan to end the meeting at twelve o'clock. All right. So, moving on to forty-three thirty, theft, trespass, and damage to property. I just have to say, we are dealing with a lot of fun topics today.
Welcome to my world. Welcome to my everyday.
I, I'm really getting a ground-level perspective of just how difficult your job must be.
This is when I'm not paying attention to the COVID. So, on this one, forty-three thirty, my only concern is under A three, trespass, B, with a student who's loitering at any school after the close of the school day without any specific need or supervision. I wonder if we could put something in there that we're rolling out a transportation issue? Because at, at any high school, you're gonna find kids just hanging around, and many are waiting until a parent or somebody else gets off work, or an older sibling to come by and get them. I just want to rule out a transportation issue, so that we're not immediately considering that to be a trespass.
I'm gonna say, without any specific I'm going to say without any specific needs such as waiting for transportation?
Sure. If that works for everybody.
That works for me.
Then actually to make that more clear, why don't I move without any supervision or a specific need? The clause makes it unclear then.
Thank you. I don't have anything else for this one.
I didn't have anything for this one, Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
Did anybody have anything here?
Oh, 4331, I'm good on that one. I don't have anything.
Didn't really have anything here. Okay, 4333, weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety.
I don't have any suggestions on this one either. Very clear cut.
No, I'm, I'm fine. Okay, moving on. Use of unmanned aircraft drones, way out of my wheelhouse. So, Ms. Brinson, Ms. Varnum, I'm sure you guys can talk us through this.
I'm, I'm going to defer to Ms. Brinson. It's out of my wheelhouse too. So I read through this and compared it with the draft one we did last year. And it seems to, it's very thorough and it seems to cover everything. Just wanted to be sure everybody was aware though, we do have a class at Ashley High School where through CTE program where they are teaching how to fly drones. So that is a CTE course now, but this does cover, it's covering all the FAA guidelines. So this is very thorough.
So I actually did have a few comments if that's all right on this one. The number, item B, it says must be approved in writing by the superintendent or designate. And I would just want to be sure that there is a process developed. It doesn't have to be in the policy, but there really does need to be a process for approval. And it doesn't, you know, doesn't specify what that is. Then further down, second paragraph on the next page, may be required to provide proof of insurance. And I don't know if anyone has conferred with risk management about this. I would be, I would, I would certainly recommend that insurance be required as part of the process of authorizing use and not leave it to be discretionary. And then I would want to talk to risk management about any potential liability issues and whether or not coverage might be necessary, whether the school's coverage would protect the district if there were some issue, what level of coverage needs to be required. I, I don't know. I haven't studied what the potential harm is, but I can certainly imagine a drone flying into someone's car and causing damage or, or hitting someone potentially. Or you might have privacy issues if someone is photographing with a drone and you might have a tort claim for someone's invasion of privacy. I just, I do think that there are some issues of liability that should be addressed and maybe getting risk management involved would be a good consideration. Then the next provision, the policy really just assumes that commercial or recreational use will be allowed. And I think the board has the opportunity or the ability to determine that you will only allow drone use for educational or instructional purposes and not give permission to use them for commercial or recreational purposes on school grounds. That's a discussion that I think that, that the board needs to have and make and the policy committee should have first and make it. So you certainly have the authority to say, we will allow it for instructional use but for commercial purposes. And obviously recognizing that someone who is not on school grounds and has permission from the FAA may be able to fly over school property and you don't have control over that. But whether or not you have to affirmatively give permission for someone to use it for commercial purposes is something that I would recommend you, you make a conscious decision about doing or not doing.
So let's put this one on hold, Mr. Bowyer.
Yeah, and I'll let you know that as far as the insurance, I do remember we did talk about the insurance. I know that the Mary Hazel on, I'm not sure if she was in on the discussions. It may have been before that came underneath her, but I believe we are covered by insurance. It's just definitely something we can kind of check into with risk management to make sure, because we did have this discussion. I won't say, I don't even think it was last year, it may have been the year before last. It all seems to blur right now.
That was before my time, but I'll double check with Julie.
Hey, good morning. This is Eddie Anderson. We also, many of our contractors, they may be designers, engineers, architects, or the contractors, when we have sites under construction or renovation, they're using drones more and more and, and we have allowed that with our permission. So if that could be included in the policy, it would be helpful.
Yeah, the way this was written, that was one of the things that we were anticipating was that contractors were going to want to do it. Or something like you have a leak on your roof, sometimes the roofing company might send a drone up to get a better look or something like that. So that is, it would be allowed under here. It's just you have to go through the process to get permission like this says.
Okay.
Okay, so we're holding 4334. All right, Ms. Varnum, I think we're back in your territory with criminal behavior, 4335.
Thank you for clarifying that criminal behavior is my territory, yes?
Yeah, I should, sorry. Your knowledge base, not personal knowledge base, but.
All good, all good. Thank you. I did have a question about this one. Everything looks pretty standard. Except in section B, at the very back bottom of page one, where it starts with the principal or designate shall notify the superintendent or designate in writing or by email of any report made by the principal to law enforcement. And that, that isn't necessarily something we're, we're doing right now. Given our presence of SROs in our buildings. Certainly the reportables, the reportable offenses that are listed in the paragraph above are communicated to us. And, and so I didn't know if this needs to be the expectation. Because it goes on to say that this will occur, you know, by the end of the workday in which the incident occurred and no later than the following day. So, and then also that the superintendent must inform the board of any such reports. And so I don't know if we want that to be specifically just the reportables in second paragraph or if that includes all reports to law enforcement.
Ms. Varnum, could you clarify what a report to law enforcement might look like that did not involve those reportables in the above paragraph?
Sure, it could be, it could be larceny, it could be a minor drug offense, it could be anything that has been communicate, could be, you know, assault, it could be something that's, you know, owner off campus that's been shared with an administrator that won't necessarily fall into the categories above. So assault resulting in serious personal injury. The definitions of those are pretty extensive in DPI policy. But, you know, it could be, you know, other acts of assault or, you know, fighting, anything like that that could be an assault without a personal injury or serious injury.
I would think that if we could clarify that to say that those measures will be undertaken, you know, with regards to informing the superintendent as soon as practical and making sure the board is aware. But just for those 10 listed violations, I don't think we need to be aware of, you know, every small marijuana charge or fistfight that doesn't involve serious injury, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, any thoughts on that, McKenna or?
Yeah, so that's fine. Yeah, you're only required to report those 10 listed above. So we can limit it to that.
And also, I guess, ask Dr. Faust if he wants to weigh in on that, if he sees that differently.
I'm processing. I mean, I think that's fine. We just have to train our principals on it. I mean, that's the biggest thing because what typically has been happening is I get a letter of expulsion on my desk. And then it's, have you done, it's, I won't sign it because we hadn't followed the actual policy. So I think we just have to make sure that we are following policy.
Absolutely. So yeah, and as long as the communication of the offenses even prior to any disciplinary determination are communicated, these, these reportable 10, if others don't need to be communicated, then we can just include that in professional development for those, if that's okay.
I did have a quick question on section B. A school employee is permitted to report to law enforcement an assault by a student on a school employee. Why would such reporting not be mandatory? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure why, and certainly there should be a record made within the administration.
I think that's referring to, and anybody else can jump in, but I see that referring to situations where an administrator has investigated a situation or some type of incident. And, you know, maybe that's been referred to law enforcement and there's been no determination between law enforcement and the school administrator that, that it would be an official report to law enforcement or would need to be documented as an official report. But then an employee may be interested in making that, that report, not from the school, but from themselves personally.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I also assume for that, so an assault, you have, you have young children, I mean, some kid slaps the, like, hits the teacher. Varying degrees of whether that's like, is that really an assault? Each of the kid, you know, I think this is just, if it's something where the teacher feels that this was, it doesn't want to limit the teacher's ability to go to law enforcement.
I definitely appreciate the clarification. I think if, yeah, if they had to report it or something, I know a man who would probably be reporting almost every day because these things happen. So I, I understand the clarification and I appreciate it.
Is the language added okay? Is that what everyone wants?
One of the 10 listed, yes.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, and I didn't have any other questions about 4335.
Anybody else on 4335 going once? Only going once. All right, 4340, school level investigation.
I don't have any concerns on this one.
Mr. Bryant, Dr. Faust?
None for me.
None for me either.
Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
4340 is on for first reading. 4341, parental involvement in student issues. Ms. Varnum?
I don't have any concerns with this one either.
Anybody?
I'm good with this one.
Well, let's just call that a really good policy then. 4342, student searches. Ms. Stagner, you want to take us through some of this? Do you have anything?
I didn't have any any comments on this. I think that it, it sets out the requirements. I was very pleased to see that the changes in paragraph A4 about intrusive personal searches that would not allow sort of the strip search scenario that gets administrators and school officials in trouble. I do, I did actually have a question about the record of searches and whether or not, I made a note here, on a prescribed form, if there is a record kept on a prescribed form. It looks like that came from your previous or your current policy. And I always get suspicious about a reference to a prescribed form if they, they may not be, that may not be, still be done. So I'd be interested to hear about that. But otherwise, I think that it is, it's appropriate. It states the legal standard accurately. And again, this is one that some good, good training of administrators is really helpful in staying out of trouble.
I had a question about that prescribed form as well. Which probably doesn't sound good. But I do have a couple of other questions as well.
If that's not, if that's not something that's being done, I think you could delete that, that paragraph unless there's a desire. There, there's no requirement to keep a record of every search and, and if it's not being done consistently, I wouldn't include it in policy.
Okay, I would, I would agree with that.
Ms. Nichols?
I agree. Thank you.
That sounds good.
Can I go through a couple of other questions I have with this one?
Please.
So back to page one, N A. Search is based on individualized reasonable suspicion. The second sentence there says this reasonable suspicion must be based on specific and articulable facts which have been acquired through reliable and or corroborated information from employees, students, law enforcement, or other credible sources. And it goes on, I'm wondering about anonymous tips because we have our Say Something app process where we receive anonymous tips on any type of concern. And if that's based on, and we have had those based on weapon or other dangerous instruments or objects. And I'm wondering if an anonymous tip would fit into that reasonable suspicion and would that lock us into not being able to respond to those?
So I'll, I'll respond to that, Julie. The anonymous tip is not, I wouldn't recommend that an anonymous.
I wouldn't recommend that an anonymous, anonymous tip by itself raises to the level of an individualized reasonable suspicion that would support a search. I think that even before you had a tip line, you have to consider an anonymous tip, whether it's a handwritten note or something, in the context of other information to determine whether there's enough there to support a search. And I think that would be different. So if you get an anonymous tip that a student has a handgun on campus and there's an immediate danger and that the part of it will be looking at the, the level of information that's provided in that tip. Is it detailed enough that you can determine that that is more reliable and it is more potentially accurate? And then you weigh that with the safety concerns. So specific and articulable facts. If the anonymous tip has, you know, Jimmy in Mrs. Smith's fourth grade class had a gun in his bookbag and his bookbag is blue with a, you know, race car on the front, that, that's some pretty specific information that you can potentially act on. If it just says Jimmy has something that he shouldn't have at school, that's less articulable and you would not want to go and do a full scale search based on that limited information. So again, this, this paragraph states what the legal standard is and it's going to be fact specific. And there are a million cases that, that look at different fact scenarios and decide whether the search was constitutional or not. And the best we can do is, is that training to help administrators understand what is sufficient information to, to move forward on.
I think, I think that makes sense regarding the specific and articulable facts. I think the, the thing that concerned me a little bit more would be the considering a credible source. And, you know, of course, using an anonymous tip with any other information, whether it's detailed and weighing it with safety concerns. But trying to determine whether an anonymous source is a credible source, I think is probably beyond ability. But certainly aligning it with other information would be helpful.
I, I think it's, you know, it's credible if the information itself in, in the tip is something that can be confirmed. So you might not know who the person is, but if it is otherwise credible, you know, it's come through the tip line, it, it has information in it that, that seems to make the rest of it credible. I don't know, McKenna, is that, it seems to me that this language is pretty much, again, following the case law. But is there anything that you can add about anonymous sources?
I don't know anything specifically about anonymous, but I agree with your assessment.
I think that helps too. And I think the explanation can be, you know, supported through professional development. I think that's probably a, a good place to, to say that with all of these policies, I think there's going to be considerable professional development for administrators required. The next one, since we're still on this one. The number three, pat down searches. A school official may conduct a first or pat down search of the student's person. Search must be conducted in private by school official. And it does say of the same gender with an adult witness present. I'm wondering if that should be of the same gender or gender identity.
I think so.
Okay. And then the suspicionless general searches down in section B. I think that where it says the searches must be, I think it's the second, third sentence. The searches must be conducted in accordance with a category, in accordance with standardized procedures established by the superintendent or designee. I think we'll need, I'd love some support in creating those procedures where then, you know, it, it goes through the administrative need. I know that doesn't require any addressing of policy. I'm just, I'm just thinking about putting it into practice already.
Do we have, um, we, do we have metal detectors, searches? Do we currently have them?
Yes, we do. We have the, most have the wands.
The wand, okay.
We do have some of the point of entry. We have a, a set or two of the point of entry ones that are used more for athletic events, specifically indoor like basketball.
Okay.
As needed. And speaking of that, so if we go on down to that number two point of entry metal detector searches, because of the way that sentence starts due to the increasing problem of weapons in schools, I don't think our data actually shows we have an increasing problem of weapons in school. So I'm wondering if we can just take out that first part of that sentence and just start with school officials may use metal detectors.
I like that better, much better.
I agree.
And then I would suggest administrative regulations for this one that includes that standardized process. And if we're not going to use a form for searches, that's good. We'll take that out. But at least that standardized process for those suspicionless general searches. And then I'm curious about where shoes fall in the search criteria. If shoes would be a part of a more intrusive personal search. And that might be something more for professional development. I just, as far as implementation, I was just curious where you guys thought shoes fell in that.
I have to admit, I, I haven't thought about that question, but that's a great, great question. I'd be happy to take a look at some cases to see if there's anything about shoes and whether it falls in that line.
Okay, yeah, I've just seen where it falls into considering it as an underharm it and then considering it as more personal. So if we can make a determination, that'd be great. And that's all I have on that one.
Okay, do we feel comfortable moving forward with this?
I, I think if Deborah can send that additional information, as she has done before.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So 4342 will be moved forward as well. Thank you, Ms. Varnum. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 1202. So I will entertain a motion to go ahead and hold the remaining policies until the next policy committee meeting.
So for the next policy committee meeting, do you just want to do the remaining policies? Or do you want additional policies too?
Let's add some additional policies.
Okay.
How many do we have left?
Today, we only have just.
I have six, yes.
Yeah, let's go ahead and add some more. It will be the first policy committee meeting for some of, or for two thirds of the policy committee. So just try to keep it somewhat light for them. But yeah, let's go ahead and add those.
Does this series go all the way up to, is it 9,000?
Yes, yes.
Wow. Wow, okay.
The eights and the nines are real short though, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this, the student and the personnel, the personnel's in seven. Those will be very heavy. But other than that, the rest shouldn't be quite as onerous.
So do we need a motion to put these forward for first reading?
I, I believe that's what you've been doing is to, to have a, a motion for all of those that are going forward for first reading.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to put all the policies forward for first reading with the exception of policies 4370, 4362, 45, or 4353, 4352, 4351, 4345, 3445, 4316, and 4334.
And, and also, I think 3620 is being, is that being held?
That's correct, I'm sorry, 3620 as well. I will second, Ms. Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
I will vote aye. The motion is agreed to. I do want to thank everybody for all the work this year. This will be our last policy committee meeting of the year. But I really appreciate all the effort you guys have put in. And Ms. Nichols, again, thank you very much for everything you've done because we're going to miss your service. 16 years. I look forward to seeing you tonight and I can.
On policy, yeah.
I congratulate you on all your success and all your accomplishments.
And I'm going to miss everyone.
We'll miss you right back. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Well, I'll go ahead and second. Ms. Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
I will, I will also vote aye. And again, if I don't see some of you, I wish you all a Merry Christmas. McKenna, I'll wish you a Merry Christmas. Everybody else, I'll probably see a hundred times.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas all. Thank you all. Stay well.
Thank you.
Thanks all.